... For which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still want to sing like America. All right, please silence your cell phones. All right, are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
There are not, Madam Chair.
Then I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Posed? Motion passes. Visitor comments?
Madam Chair, I believe we have Chris again who'd like to share something with food service.
Hello everyone, I did put together a little list, Mike asked me to kind of do comparison real quick. There's just some quick numbers there. The dark blue is going to be the overall enrollment at the high school and middle school combined. The number right down from there is going to be the attendance for that day. The first 25 are the ones that I had access to to begin with. And they're actually the 575 is not right, it's actually 725 according to GMC. And then the next one now is going to be the breakfast numbers for the years. And the bottom one is going to be lunch numbers. Right now, they're pretty much close to about the same, about 74% or so. I'm starting to tick those up a little bit, especially in breakfast in the high school. This month, I'm starting a more robust hot breakfast. Cereals Friday is gone away and I've got some more pancake and eggs type things going in. So we're going to have a few hopefully increases in breakfast numbers there, so.
And you said this is only middle school and high school?
Yeah, yeah. The elementary school is pretty standard, it hasn't changed a lot, they're kind of a captive audience, so.
All right, very nice.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Brax? My hours are done tonight, so I may see you at future meetings, but thank you for being a part of the last year.
Thanks for coming, good luck in your class.
Thank you.
All right, instead of the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the previous monthly board meeting, the monthly cash flow, monthly gills paid, monthly bills paid in activities accounts, personnel summary sheet, and then I would like to thank the people for the donations, which were Community Charities Minnesota for $700 for the Special Olympics, Smiles for Jake for $1,500 for the golf carts, Jake Brandt Insurance Agency at $1,500 for the golf cart, and the Pillager Husky Booster Club $1,500 for golf cart sponsors. So thank you to all of those people that donated for us. And beyond that, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Moving on to special board reports for possible action, we're going to start with budget.
We didn't date, but we have some items to attend to.
Awesome. Somebody asked me what we were levying. I said 6.04.
You were here right on.
It was 6.01. And that was when I was in Colorado, I was seeing that.
Okay, so on the agenda, it looks like this is my business manager report. Everybody has a copy in front of them. It's short and sweet because most of it's presented tonight. But I did want to update, our 2025 audit is finalized. There were no changes, the federal regulations came through, everything's good to go, so we're good. Fundraiser recap, we do this two times a year, you have that in front of you because we want to review that. We had multiple fundraisers, I just want to make a note of the class of 2026, the chocolate one. It has a negative number, but that is still ongoing, so they are still selling. They just placed another chocolate order, so that's why it's in the negative because they paid for the chocolate, but we're still collecting, we're still selling.
I was wondering about that, I was saying, how do you go negative when you're fundraising?
Yeah, no, it's still ongoing. And I'm waiting on a couple of others, but let's see, like the football team coupon cards, I'm still waiting on that one. I haven't seen anything come through for the copy, but that also looks like it's ongoing through because they apply for selling through January 31st, so I should be seeing that coming. But other than that, a lot of it's future stuff, so that's why those are still blank. So you'll see those come up in May when we look, relook at all of this again. Any questions on fundraiser recap? Okay, so, and then we're going to do the truth in taxation tonight, we're going to do levy tonight, and then student activity reports, we also look at those a couple of times a year. So you have in front of you, I also handed out, there's like an 18 page report, actually yours, ours, I think it's back. So each fund, so like wrestling, there's a total, track, there's a total, so there's total going along on each page. You're going to see there's a negative one for boys basketball. They have deposits coming through because they did their piece of sales and they just did some grocery baking, so I'm not concerned about that one, they're in the goal.
And Super One has continued the grocery baking thing, that's phenomenal, good.
Yes, yes. They're taking that up.
Awesome.
Yeah. Oh yeah, as you go through, I'm not concerned about any of them, they're all looking pretty good. Or they have stuff coming, so. Okay, so I will, we go ahead and get started with our truth in taxation presentation. All right. So for the agenda.
Can you, you may present, so hit present, so it's just the one slide. You're going to get rid of the red box, there you go.
All right. Okay, so today's agenda, just like every year, we do the big picture, we'll look at everything. Then we're going to look at like your property tax classification and the values. We'll do the school district factors affecting the pay 2026 levy. And then we'll pull it all together at the end and you can ask any questions that we have. Okay, so big picture. So why do we have a truth in taxation meeting? Well, for one, it's by law. Two, we have to go over the tax statements and we have to do a public hearing to go over the levy, the budget, and have any public comments. So who sets the school levy? So there's a couple of components, the state formula that is set by the state legislature. So the general formula, the operating capital, or career and tech, or reemployment, all of that kind of falls into that levy portion. And then there's also a holder approved as operates by the state levy, which we'll see that breakdown on our property tax classification when we get to that slide. So how is my property tax determined? Well, it's determined by the county assessor, they determine the market value of your home or land. Then the Minnesota legislature sets the formulas for the tax capacity. Then the county auditor comes and calculates the tax capacity for each parcel. And then the county auditor divides the total levy by the total tax capacity of the district to determine the tax rate that's needed. So what they're looking at, so we have, this is just us, this isn't statewide, this is just our revenues by source. So if you look, we have state resources of, for revenue of about, just about 83%. We have federal funds at just about 4%, other is about 3%, and then our local sources, our levy sources are about 10% of our budget, our revenue budget. So this is just looking at our funding trail with the inflation. So the orange dotted line is the formula allowance that's adjusted for the pupil weight change. The blue line is the adjusted pupil weight change and the inflation. So you can tell from the blue and the orange that the orange line is in keeping up with the blue line. So we have a gap in that, our expenses and revenues.
And it's getting bigger.
Yeah. And then property tax levies, so this is school versus non-school. You can see where the blue line, you can see how we're trending. Now, the non-school local governments, so your cities, counties, they're the red lines. You can see they're trending quite a bit upward, while we're kind of still in the middle. Now statewide, you see the green dots towards the bottom, they're kind of just leveled off down there. So that's what their property tax levies are doing. And this goes back from 1992 to 2046. So just taking a look at us, so this is our first budget revision. So we have our revenues for each fund, right? So we've got the general fund, our food service, our community ed, and then our debt. And then you've got our expenses for each fund and then the differences in between. And then, so for our school year budget, again, so here's all other revenues, so 80%. So payable levy, which is four, about four million, that's going to be 20% of this pie. So now let's look at some of our property classifications and our values. So your property tax statement is going to look a lot like this. So you have step one up at the top, that's your taxes payable for the year. And it has a comparison from last year to this year. So you can see what your home set has done from last year to this year. And in step two, they have your proposed taxes, it has your taxes report credit, it has your school building, any agricultural market credits, and then your property taxes after the credits, there's your total. And then step three, it just says like your property tax statement is coming in 2026, you'll see that through the spring. So this is just a proposal. So effective tax rates, so the property classifications, these are the percentages by classification. So your farm, seasonal rec, residential homes, that apartment, public utilities, and then your commercial industry. And then the share of the tax liabilities, you have your property tax classifications again on the left. Your middle column is your market share value. And then your side, the right side, is the share of the net taxes for each classification. Okay, so age of school and the rural land tax credit. So there was a law that was enacted in 2017, it affects all of our existing funds, seven debt levies except the old head bonds. It reduces the farmers and timbers, reduces taxes for farmers and timber owners, and it will remain at 70% in 2026. So the revenue for age of school comes from the state income, sales, and other tax revenue. So if you have the age of school credit, you're going to find that, where that blue arrow is by the number four, you're going to see that agricultural and rural land credits, that's where that would be if that affects your parcel. Okay, so equalization factors for the LOR and the operating referendums. So for tier one, it's up to $300 per pupil, equalizing factor about 180,000 RP. The tier two is $300 up to the 724, which if you look, we are at the 724, that's what we take on our. And then the tier one operating referendum and the tier two operating referendum, which we don't have that. Okay, so other school factors that affect the pay 2026 levy. So possible reasons for changes to your parcel, so obviously the change in value of your home. That's going to affect your levy. Change in enrollment numbers, change in valuation of your property in the district, the local decisions and requirements, so any adjustment for prior years or any legislative changes that will all affect that tax levy. So here's a referendum picture, so this is showing our district compared to the operating referendum revenues across the state. So, oh, I usually draw an arrow, so we are. So we are, I don't know if I can reach it. Right in the middle here, there's that light yellow on the one side of us and then like a white on the other side of us. We're right in the middle there. It's just showing that we don't take an operating referendum, but all the other states, so you have. The dark yellow is saying that they're below the district mediums. There's a, almost an orange color, those guys are above district median for the operating referendums. And then the red county for the red schools are well above median. So that's what all of those colors mean as far as the operating. And you can see that there's 94 districts in the state that don't take operating. Well, not everybody, because next to us, you can see Brainerd, which they're also the same color as us.
Staples has one. Crosby just passed one, so next year you'll see Crosby will have. Pequot does not have one.
And then you can see Little Falls and Bola, they have one. I know, I should put my arrow there. Okay. So let's put it all together here. So for the long-term facility maintenance in the school, that's included in the school property taxes. So the school board and then MBE, we approve the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan every year, we have it in the summer. So this year, we have listed projects, so right now we're just looking at normal maintenance, that's kind of our project. We don't have a building project going on happening. So LTFM revenue, we have about 471,000 that we get from that. So the state share, the aid, is about 65,000 or 66,000 estimated. Local share, so the levy portion is about 405,000 of that. And that's pre-plotted in our property tax notes under the other levies section. So the proposed pay 26 levy, which you will also see, these numbers will coincide with your levy sheet that was handed out today. And this is what we've been talking about pretty much since September, because our numbers were October, because our numbers really haven't changed. So you have our general fund levy, our community ed, our general debt. So our levy that we're proposing for is about $4 million. It's an increase of about 229,000 from last year, which is about a 6.01% increase. Okay, so if you're looking for more information or you have questions on your property tax, you can certainly call your county auditor. So we cover two counties in our district, so depending on which county you live in, it's going to depend on which county you're going to call. You can certainly try and call me, but if it's related to values, I probably won't be able to answer those questions. You're going to have to call the county. You can also call the state of Minnesota for a property tax relief if you feel like your taxes are, if you're being overtaxed. You can certainly call the state of Minnesota for that. Any questions?
We'll call you. Send them your way.
Okay. That'd be great. That'd be great, right? That would be great.
I haven't got it, I haven't, I got one and I haven't heard much about it, so. Any other questions about truth of taxation?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the adoption of the 2025 payable 2026 property tax levy.
I have to read it out loud. The final property tax levy must be certified by the county auditor and MBE by December 28th, 2025. The attached is the proposed final payable 2026 property tax levy certification in total amount of $4,41,067.16. Therefore, be resolved by the Pillager School Board of Independent School District Number 116, 2025 payable 2025 property tax levy, what did I say, 2026?
I think so.
That's the 2025 payable 2025 property.
Payable 2026.
Yeah, it says 25 in here, it should say 26.
Yep, you're right, it was 2026.
Hard to find good answers sometimes.
Hey, the fact that I read it and got it.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Well, it doesn't make sense when you say the same two cases.
That's what I was wondering, okay. Therefore, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 116, that the 2025 payable 2026 property tax levy is adopted in the total amount of $4,41,067.16. And further, that the school board clerk is authorized to sign the document used to certify the property tax levy to the county auditors and the Minnesota Department of Education. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? And all those in favor? Sigefi, I think?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, we have adopted.
Thank you, Missy.
And then I have to sign when. She will get it to you on Sunday.
Yes, so I'll do it tomorrow, because I got to one, so whenever, it has to be filed by December 31st, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Missy, just wanted to touch base on that slide. So once again, when you look at that information, when you say 90 districts out of how many have an operating levy, you saw that, you know, when we, when we talked to you in September about taking that full amount and all the LTFM and all those things, if you didn't take that, our gap would go even bigger. And then when you have districts around us that, like Staples or Little Falls that have an operating levy, we would lose funds to do that. Plus, when you take some, as she stated, that LTFM, the state does kick in some money toward that. So if you didn't take all that, you're also turning away some money. So just a couple of things to keep in mind for next year when you keep talking that conversation of that levy, because if you didn't take those dollars, you're losing, you're even losing more ground, so. Thank you, thanks, Missy.
Any other questions for Missy? Thank you. Anything else from budget?
Nope.
Personnel, we did not meet. And I think we're dealing with our personnel all the time, because we're having ongoing supervision. So.
Who's your character?
We're going to see each other each other.
See each other again soon, I'm sure. All right, curriculum.
We did not.
No, we did not?
Just a really quick update, just three things, mainly a technology update. We are increasing our security and visitor management in the buildings, and so we are.
Wednesday I have to bring my driver's license?
You have an ID, or you have a badge, so you can through the key card system, which logs and tells.
But I need to remember that.
Well, you will need to remember that. So it isn't up and running yet, so about over the next month or so, we will be installing a visitor management system through a company called Raptor. Pequot, a local district, uses Raptor as well. People will need to show an ID to get in the building if you're a guest. And so you'll scan your ID, from there it will print out a badge, it will say have your picture on it, it will also tell us why you're here and who you're here to meet with, so that we see you in the hallway. That will be new to us, so we will be working with communications, send that out to families and to the community so that they know that that has changed and they should expect to need an ID.
And I was going to say, are we turning them away in the first month if they don't have it?
We will be working through some of that process, Raptor's going to kind of help us through that. We have some questions, just in terms of even like deliveries and things like that, like how we will manage that. So it will be new for us across the board, but for the most part, yes, we will start to turn people away and say you need to have.
Now, it's, so I know Brainerd uses it too, but, so we'll guess, have to do it every single day when they come in, once they're checked in, and then they can come in, and since you have their picture on file, they can print it out.
So they, they will need to do it infrequently, they will need to do it each time that they come in. There is a part of the system, if you are a regular guest here or coming into a classroom regularly, there are those pieces, that we can either print out a QR code that goes with it, you just scan it and it just prints it out.
So I won't need to remember every way.
So you'll have, yes, you'll possibly have that unfiled if you're coming in more often, right?
Thank you.
As we kind of go through that system, it does also scan the sex fund database, the national database. It also has our local, so anything that might be, I know, court ruling or anything like that would go in there. So that will be a system that people will do right before they get into the office. So in the best of you'll, there'll be iPad, we'll scan it from there, it'll print out a badge, and our secretary's will open the door.
I love it.
So with that, what kind of got us looking at this system is the emergency management and reunification. We talked a lot about reunifications here, the emergency management side of it as well with Raptor. It will, one, it will log and keep track of all of our drills. So our fire drills, our tornado drills, our lockdowns, everything. With that, it will be connected to all of our computer systems. And so if we go into a lockdown, all of our screens that are on will go into and say that you're entering a lockdown, you're in your location. Teachers then will be able to, through either their phone or through a Chromebook or through their desktop computer, they can roster all the kids that are with them in that moment. And we will see it in the moment, where are all of our students? It connects to our visitor management as well, so we know other people who are in the building, so that we can keep track of people very quickly.
And it lets us know who's not here.
It lets us know who's not here.
So who are we missing and who are we not, you know, who are we missing and who are we not missing?
You're not looking for little Johnny kids in those classrooms, but they called in sick today.
Correct, so we reduce that number very quickly. And then we go into figuring out, are they gone in an appointment, are they gone at this, are they gone at that? So that we know where people are at, and all of our teachers have access to that. It also has a messaging system within that app. So the moment we know something about it, we can send that out to staff. We had a false alarm a couple of weeks ago, and that was before schools started. And it, that was one of the questions that people had, is this a drill? You got to treat it like it's real, you got to treat it like a real until we know, right? And people moved really quickly and moved into action. And thankfully, it was a false alarm, the system malfunctioned.
You can tell it wasn't a false alarm by the voices across the radio.
Oh, absolutely, people were very quickly going into action. Yep, very quickly. So my hope in Janu- At Janu-, yes, exactly, there was tents on there. At the January board meeting, just to be able to do a little bit of a demo for you. Sometime after that January board meeting, we will have a live date for the visitor management. By February, we have PD Day in February, looking to do that as a demo for staff on the drill cart. More to come. The last two I have are just more updates. I talked about last night, the PSDO consortium that the districts around us are putting together. We are moving forward with that, so second semester, we're going to try to do that. We actually spearheaded that last year just to remind people with Pequot. We shared classes back and forth, this will be a bit of a bigger pool, so hopefully I can work this in CS courses versus the PS. And the assessment update is, we, this is kind of our middle window, we do fall, winter, spring. We do offer for classrooms and grade levels that want to just kind of do a little measurement in the middle. And so we are in the middle of that window right now, we'll be ending in the next week or so. But just to kind of give you a highlight with second, third, and fourth, the A reading, they're all moving in the upward direction, which we want to see, and we're going to see that with, it's compared to fall benchmarks. The hope is that we kind of get this zigzag, and so come January, we do know that we're going to see a little bit of a dip because it gets harder, but we don't want to, we don't want to see this dip below the fall. So we're expecting rising up, a little bit of adjustment, rising back up until the end of the year. So it's all moving in the right direction.
Anybody have any questions for Ryan? Thank you so, thank you so much. Anything else from curriculum?
Nope.
Policy?
Policy, Regent's not here, so I'm filling in.
Good woman.
We have a third reading of policy 707, which was transportation. And since it's third reading, I'm going to make a motion to accept that policy.
Is there a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes.
Then we have a group of policies that we only need to read through once. They are one-meeting adoption type policies because they are adopting legal updates.
Can I interrupt this for a second? Do we need to take individual ones on these, or when she makes a motion, can we do it all at one, all together? That way you don't have to make all of them. Do you involve them all?
Yeah. Okay, so first one, policy 306 is the Administrator Code of Ethics. And the general statement of policy was just adjusted to the current language. Policy 606, textbooks and instructional materials. This adopted a paragraph saying that all instructional materials, including teachers' manuals.
saying that all instructional materials, including teachers' manuals, films, tapes, or other supplemental material, which will be used in connection with any survey, analysis, or evaluation as part of any applicable program, shall be available for inspection by parents or guardians of students. Policy 712 is video recording other than on buses. And it used to say video surveillance. So basically, the change was changing the word from surveillance to recording and updating that. Next policy, 722, public data and data subject requests. Added some legislative updates. One thing was that if the school district notifies the requesting person that responsive data or copies are available for inspection or collection and the requesting person doesn't come to inspect these things, within five business days, the school district may suspend any further response to the request until the requesting person inspects the data that has been made available or collects and pays for the copies that have been made. In this policy, it also updated about the cost for making these copies. 100 or fewer pages. 25 cents for one-sided copies, 50 cents for two-sided copies. Yeah. Quite expensive, it can be a lot of dollars. So those are the four policies. 707, 306, nope, sorry, 306, 606, 712, and 722. That I'm going to make a motion to accept those policy language changes.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
That's all we have.
Anything, nothing else from policy? Beautiful. Activities?
Oh, we did not meet, Madam Chair. But everything's in the.
Full of. I watched a little bit of practice for wrestling tonight.
I would say that the winter sports are fully in gear. And winter, we did have our first team win for wrestling.
Yes, I've seen that. That's awesome.
Congratulations, that was amazing.
Facilities?
Not meet.
We'll have some, I'll have a couple of weekly meetings here with Wold on moving forward with the projects and stuff. So we'll probably need to meet in a few months. It'll take a while here for him to get stuff to, for the plan and everything.
Moving on to other than, MBE 04 projected enrollment.
Madam Chair, you have this in your board book. We do this every year, or kind of tells us where we are with four-year-olds, three-year-olds. For this year's report.
And she's the only one that brought her computer.
I didn't see it. No, I didn't see it. I didn't see it this morning when I looked at the book either.
Ooh, somebody forgot to put that in.
So are we up or are we down?
Well, we're about the same. So I'll read it to you. In 25, 26, we have 95 kids that are recorded for four-year-olds. Compared to the years past, 91, 91, 88. So we're pretty much right in line with the years before. Of those, we have 58 zeros, 61 one-year-olds, 61 two-year-olds, 91 three-year-olds, and 95 four-year-olds. So we're kind of in line with where we've been in the past. Of those 95 kids that we have on our books for four-year-olds, 56 are Pillager students and 39 are out of the district. So pretty much in line with where we've been the last three or four years, five years. Pretty much nothing to show anything that would decline. Okay?
Awesome. Plan for the snow makeup day on November 26th?
So what I would like to do at this point is, my thought would be to share with you guys, we do have some makeup days in our calendar. We have in the past tended to forgive one student day. So I would recommend at this point that we forgive that as a student day. Pending more makeup days that we might miss. So if we miss a day in December or January or February, we would probably then make those days up. But as of now, what I, my plan would be to make, to forgive that student day, but make the staff come back on Friday, February 13th, which is President's Day weekend. So we would have that as a staff development day for them. What would change that would be if we have another snow day here between now and then, then that might become a student day. So at this point, if you're okay with that, I would like to get that out to the staff so they can know that that at this point is going to be a workday for them. Now, they may have vacations planned, but they would have to take a personal PTO day if they have something like that planned. But that's my plan for now, pending any other days that we don't miss. Okay. I will, I'll send that out to the staff so they know that that would be at this point. They're working that day, whether it's students coming or not, but they will be here. Okay?
Superintendent's report? We're just going to continue on with you.
Yeah. December 16th, next week, we have third and fourth grade Christmas concert. We have them in the afternoon and in the evening in the CTC Center. We have the wellness committee meeting for food service tomorrow at 1:30 with, with the food service company. We have some students and some parent reps. Sarah's on. Is that Wednesday? Did I say tomorrow?
You said tomorrow.
Yeah, that's Wednesday, I'm sorry. It's on Wednesday.
I was going to say, I can't wait tomorrow.
Yeah, it's on Wednesday. So we bring some students in and we ask questions about food service and we record it and make some changes and some things. So that's coming up on Wednesday. This middle school musical was held this last weekend. I'd like to congratulate all those involved. Very good. Had well over 50 students involved in that. And we're one of the very few schools that have a middle school musical, which is very cool for them. Choir concert tonight, which is set 6:30 and 7:30. Band concert next Monday, 6:30 and 7:30. First home wrestling meet is coming up this Thursday, 5 o'clock, versus New York Mills. So if you're around, stop out for that. Kind of exciting night for, for us. It's, I don't know, probably in the main gym, I'm guessing. They may eventually have them in the middle school. I don't know, but for now, I think it's in the main gym. And then the last thing I have is, I put on your, on your table, a plan for 2027, 2028. I'm already kind of thinking about doing the school calendar for two years from now. Labor Day is a very late, once again, it's on September 6th. The state legislature passed a law that schools could start prior to Labor Day for next year and the following year. While we already had the calendar done for next year, but I would like to propose an option for possibly starting prior to Labor Day. Before I do that, I just kind of wanted to get some feedback from you guys as a board, if that's something that you would like me to perceive, to pursue. There's lots of different options that you can do. This is just an example. Starting on Wednesday, you could start on Monday, take Friday off, for example, which would make kind of sense because you probably have a home football game on Thursday night. Especially if you have a home game, we tend to like to do them on Thursday. Some schools don't, like some schools want to play on Friday.
So just current schedule as well, you'd be out before Memorial.
With the third option, you would be, yes. And I think there's another option as well that is still out before Memorial Day, with starting after Labor Day, but then you don't have the two days off in March. So there's different options out there. But this would give an option to starting before Labor Day, which then also would give them some breaks in the calendar year. And yeah, so one of the things I would do is I would probably change that to where we would not have school on that Friday before Labor Day. That gives it a four-day weekend, which would help the resorts and things like that for families that have trips planned.
And this would just be one option that.
One of three options, yes. The staff may not vote for this option, they may vote for a different one. But this is just to provide another option. But before I did that, I wanted to get you guys some feedback to say, yeah, go ahead and put it in there. Nope, we don't want to touch school before Labor Day. So.
That's what I said too. It's almost easier for a lot of parents because the buses are bringing the kids in and stuff.
Maybe starting on Monday and having a Friday off.
Yeah, and we maybe can start on Tuesday, right? And have staff development day on Monday, for example.
March looks brutally long.
Yeah, yes, I was thinking the same thing. There's nothing.
The other schools in the area. You don't have something off. Just looks like a long month, but not that this is a bad calendar.
Yeah.
It works.
The two days off are in April.
Yeah.
Easter break, right, yeah. And there are some options there that, I think one of the options is going through June, into June, getting some days off. But our staff has always voted for getting out before Memorial Day. So, but I always give them an option and they always tend to take. So I'm guessing that they will probably vote for this one? But I just, before I offered it. You could, or another day off, or an extra day at President's Day or whatever.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for this panel?
Last thing I have too, the superintendent option posting did go up today.
My question, I just reminded you, when do we all meet again for that?
January 21st is our next meeting. With. And that, he's going to be online with us.
I'm an Apple person, so I'll go to my calendar on my Apple. I was getting nervous, so I leave them there. I'm like, no, what are you doing?
I'll remind you.
Well, and we have a school board meeting before.
Yeah. We have a board meeting on the 12th.
Pretty much every other. And we're going to start at what time?
That was at 5:30. They're all at 5:30 with those, I think. The interviews are at 4. So I have.
Thank you. Anything from any other board members? And I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.